Recording in progress.
City of Rockaway Beach Council meeting on Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty five at six P M. will come to order. City council and staff want our business meetings to be a safe place for all to attend and share their opinions, a place of common courtesy and civility. As such, we request all people in attendance, respect those attending, and the opinions of those with whom you may disagree during meetings, prior to meetings, during breaks, and after meetings. This will enable our community to establish an environment wherein all issues and opinions may be fairly considered, and decisions, though sometimes difficult, will be made in a spirit of mutual respect for all community members, no matter our differences. Please silence your cell phones, and let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Yeah, I got this. Hold on, we're at court, I can't speak up.
Let's record who is in attendance. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conra?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Here.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yeah, present.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor McNeely is present. The Consent Agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group whereby all are passed with a single motion and vote. You have before you the Consent Agenda on approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes, approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty five workshop minutes, and a review of financial reports. The minutes of the previous meetings and financial reports were distributed beforehand. Does a counselor wish to remove any of these items from the Consent Agenda to be discussed individually during Agenda Item eleven? Items removed for Consent Agenda. If there are no items for removal, are there any clarifying questions pertaining to the documents in the Consent Agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Let's vote. Counsel President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conra?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to presentations, guests, and announcements. We'll begin with the State of the City message. I, Charles McNeely, am proud to come before you and as your mayor, deliver my third State of the City message as stimulated in our charter. I say without hesitation that fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five was another exceptional year for Rockaway Beach as we continue to chart our path forward. Our city's net position increased by over two million dollars this past fiscal year, indicating that our city is well-funded and financially sound. Our city managed spending closely while benefiting from Finance Director Marnie Johnston's cash management acumen and the continued flow of transient lodging tax. Our current annual financial audit will begin shortly, and as a reminder, the city completes each annual audit on a timely basis and receives an unqualified opinion each year from our independent auditors. The city's main revenue streams consist of water and sewer service charges, property taxes, investment interest income, and transient lodging taxes. The city's property tax rate is zero point nine eight eight per one thousand dollars of assessed value. The combined rate of tax, bonds, and districts is the lowest of all cities in Tillamook County. On the plus side, with our grandfathered allowable usage of transient lodging taxes, the city enjoys a greater benefit than allowed under more recent state rules. The city can apply fifty-one percent to city services per our ordinances compared with thirty percent in many other jurisdictions. During the last four quarters, the transient lodging tax was up over sixty-five thousand dollars over the previous four quarters. It continues to be a strong indicator of tourism doing well in our community. The city council amended our use of transient lodging tax ordinance to bring it in line with state law, eliminating the necessity of limiting use of funds to media advertising. We could, for example, under our amended ordinance, fund strategic planning and research to stimulate tourism in the spring and fall. Our city staff wrote six successful grants securing millions of dollars towards city projects and initiatives, processed thirty-seven public records requests, hosted fifty-one public meetings, including five town halls. Thank you, City Recorder Melissa Thompson and staff. Prepared, and city council passed one proclamation, fifty-seven resolutions, and six ordinances, and approved five wayside use applications. Finally, they reviewed and processed over five hundred short-term rental renewals. The city council directly infused almost three hundred thousand dollars into our local businesses and nonprofit organizations to foster growth and economic development in our community, a level of financial support unseen in other Tillamook County cities. They awarded six small community grants to nonprofit organizations and community entities for a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Three large community grants to nonprofit organizations and community entities for a total of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and six dollars and forty-two cents. Three off-season tourism marketing grants for a total of nine thousand dollars, and nine facade grants for a total of two hundred and nine thousand sixty-three dollars. Tillamook County Visitors Association, known as T C V A, and the city modified the facade grant program this year to disperse fifty percent of the award upfront, with the remainder dispersed upon completion of the project with proof of expenditures. As a result, more local businesses were able to take advantage of the facade grant program. The Planning Department approved eight new dwelling units and one single-family dwelling conversion to a duplex. County occupancy data shows that eighteen new dwelling units and one additional dwelling unit were built last fiscal year, with one non-living space conversion to living space completed. The Planning Department prepared four, and the city council held a land use hearing. The city council upheld the Planning Commission's decision. Oregon Shore's Conservation Coalition appealed the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeal, also known as L U B A, which did remand it back to the city with two assignments of error. The city has scheduled a public hearing for September ninth to revisit the application. On the recommendation of the Planning Commission, the city council acted to ease the housing crunch in Rockaway Beach by opening the door to allow for middle housing in our residential doors. The council amended the city zoning code to allow duplexes, townhomes, and other multi-unit housing as directed by Senate Bill four zero six. This simplifies the process for developers, as they will no longer need to request a variance to build this type of housing. Throughout the month-long public engagement process, our residents have repeatedly shown support for these efforts. It's great to be mayor of a city willing to take positive steps forward on important issues. City Planner and Planning Commission collaborated in updating our community grant program. Planning Commission recommended, and city council approved, splitting the grant program into small, less than five thousand dollars, and large, five thousand or more, grants. Added a grant scoring process, enhanced the materials, including the application, and added a review process to assess clients. We filled openings on the Planning Commission and Budget Committee with members of our community who stepped up, bringing new vitality to these deliberative bodies. Audience members shared that they had difficulty hearing the city council workshop and meeting procedures. They were also not fans of the folding chairs in the council room. The city responded with upgrades to the council room, including microphones, speakers, and comfortable chairs for audience members. Additional speakers were added to the second-floor conference room. We appreciate all who choose to attend our public meetings and town halls. The city recognized that it can be difficult for our elected officials to separate personal from government when using their personal technology. As such, the city began providing each elected official with a city email, a laptop, and access to I T services and support. It is now simple to keep our government business separate. The city has installed an electronic reader board in front of the city hall. This is an amazing new communication tool for events, municipal meetings, and local emergencies. I want to thank our community for suggesting the idea. Equitable access to the outer doors is important to our community, with many examples demonstrating our commitment to this value. During the last fiscal year, the city installed enhanced beach access at the wayside with stairs and a ramp, and installed two benches along the Rockaway Beach Cedar Preserve trail. Rockaway Beach's David's Track Chair is now available for use by residents and visitors. David's Chair mission is to enrich the lives of mobility impaired people with independence and freedom by empowering them to engage in outdoor activities they previously were unable to, free of charge. I want to thank Saint Mary's Church for providing the space to locate the chair's shed. You can read more about this organization on their website, davidchair.org, and reserve the chair. Clearly a great fit for Rockaway Beach. The city partnered with Neocani Sewell District and Tillamook People's Utility District to add streetlights on Highway one oh one near the high school and middle school. The enhanced safety brought by the lighting for those entering and exiting the high school and middle school, particularly in the winter, will benefit our community. The fire department continued to host the Emergency Medical Technician E M T class in cooperation with Tillamook Bay Community College. During the last fiscal year, the department welcomed three new E M Ts from the program: Canbury, Briar, Benazia, and McKenzie McCambridge. I apologize if I mispronounced their names. Under the direction of Captain Grace, we are currently hosting the inaugural E M T Advanced Class in the county. The E M T program has greatly improved the medical responsibilities countywide by adding over sixty E M Ts. Our focus on medical emergency response is seen in the additions of a powered stair chair, electric extrication tools, and a lifting device for citizens who fall and need assistance getting up. The fire department spent the last year recruiting new volunteers. Six recruits from the community have been working hard for the last six months with bookwork and hands-on practice to learn department policies and procedures, and working to complete firefighter one academy. Upon completion, the recruits will be able to respond to nine-one-one calls and enter a burning structure. The strong volunteer corps continues to be the backbone of our fire department. The staffing grant from the State Fire Marshal's Office provided the department with two firefighters from July to October. This upstaffing has greatly improved our responsibilities during the busy summer months. Rockaway Beach Emergency Management continued to train and work hard to improve readiness to respond to natural or man-made disasters. The radio group continued to train weekly with our communication system. The CERT group and preparedness members continued to train and add skills, including C P R, burst day, triage, rescue, and hazard scenarios, as well as delivering monthly community preparedness topics such as wildfire safety, storm safety, foraging, water purification, and the geology of Rockaway Beach. The twenty twenty four Shake-A-Body event was well-attended and used as an opportunity to perform a practical exercise to test our abilities. Many valuable lessons were gained from the exercise. Goals have been set for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year to continue to improve the program. Resources have been allocated to improve our supplies cache. Work continues on the preparation of a formal emergency management plan. The development of a formal community wildfire protection plan has been initiated. Chief Hessie met the screen with specialists from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, O S F M, and completed a tour and survey of the city of Rockaway Beach, including the urban growth boundary. O S F M is currently compiling data and will be assisting in developing the community wildfire protection plan. Once completed, this plan will be used to protect Rockaway Beach and assist Tillamook County in developing a comprehensive plan for the entire county. The fire department drone program continued to improve innovations and improvements in mapping software, grid searching, thermal imaging, and color recognition software all help to improve the efficiency of finding a lost person. The addition of lightweight auto inflatable devices has added tools for surf rescues. Pre-planning of riptide areas and hazards has also been added. The drone program is a valuable tool for our fire department. Public Works had another busy year. In addition to their normal day-to-day activities, I would like to highlight the following accomplishments. In the infrastructure and construction area, completed the South Pacific Street Water Line, Stormwater, and Paving Project in May twenty twenty four. Finalized the ADA-compliant Wayside Beach Accessibility Project in April twenty twenty five. Adjusted five culverts at Beacon Street to meet the engineer's plan in June twenty twenty five. Installed a larger drain culvert under South Second Avenue to improve drainage in September twenty twenty four. And performed extensive road maintenance, filling potholes with eleven tons of asphalt, and scheduling slurry seal projects. In the water and sewer system area, they rebuilt thirty horsepower sewage pump at the Nadana Beach Pumping Station in January twenty twenty five. Installed a modern supervisory control and data acquisition module at the Jettie Creek Water Treatment Plant, integrating water system components. Upgraded the plant's internet with Starlink and canceled legacy phone lines, saving approximately eleven hundred dollars per month. Completed a comprehensive lead and copper service line inventory and sent it to the state for approval. Flushed water lines to maintain water quality and repaired multiple water main breaks. In the public and park spaces, completed landscape plantings at Anchor Street Park with a diverse selection of native species. Reinstalled benches and tables at the wayside and added benches along the Cedar Creek Boardwalk to improve accessibility. Installed additional cameras and signage along the boardwalk, prepared a memorial bench, and arranged a site for the Lions Flood Wagon at the wayside. In the safety and accessibility area, added an ADA parking stall and painted a safety stripe in the wayside parking lot. Secured fireworks prohibition signs and ordered new cones for the Fourth of July events, and installed bike racks at city hall in the boardwalk and responded to crosswalk maintenance requests. In technology and communication, they added the electronic reader board at city hall to improve public communication. Installed Q R code wayfinding signs to guide visitors, and added water conservation information on the city website. And they modernized the water system's telemetry and communication infrastructure. In emergency response and maintenance, cleaned up quickly after the E F zero tornado and King Tide Bomb Cyclone events, keeping flooding minimal. Deployed portable generators to maintain sewer and water systems during a large power outage in December twenty twenty four, and repaired roads, culverts, and sewer lines following storms and maintenance requests. In terms of planning and grants, they assisted in securing two point eight million dollars for the Nadana Beach Water Line replacement, and four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for Lake Leibel Park improvements. Applied for a twenty thousand dollar sustainable infrastructure planning project grant for leak detection and submitted a pre-application for a transportation and growth management grant. I can report that we did get the twenty thousand dollar leak detection grant, and we have not yet heard about the transportation and growth management grant. Supported a grant request for streetlights near Neocani schools and facilitated a ninety thousand dollar Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board grant for Jettie Creek watershed restoration. Oversaw the development of a source water protection plan and solicited proposals for our engineer record. Other noteworthy activities: filled an opening, filled an open utility worker one position and a plant operator two position to assure appropriate staffing levels. Delivered sand for a robotics camp, replaced a damaged public works vehicle within budget, and coordinated with volunteer organizations. And then they worked with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality on recycling modernization act requirements. And last but not least, conducted annual survey training covering lockout, tagout, confined space rescue, ladder safety, and personal protective equipment. Finance Director Marnie Johnston made major contributions to our city in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. She added a combined cash investment cash balance report to the monthly council packet and began producing quarterly financial reports available on our city website. This is the level of financial transparency never seen before in Rockaway Beach governance. Added another layer of security to the city's checking account. The city is now participating in our bank's Positive Pay Program. Positive Pay is a fraud prevention tool that ensures only authorized checks are processed. And she swept excess cash from her operating account, also known as the city's checking account, to the local government investment pool. Her actions garnered seven hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents in interest income last fiscal year, which has grown substantially year over year since Ms. Johnston's arrival. To put that in perspective, the city receives approximately five hundred and sixteen thousand in property taxes annually. Finance Director Johnson and City Manager Shepherd held bargaining sessions with our American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Representative Employees. The city reached a consensus on a four-year collective bargaining agreement. The process wrapped up in June with signatures on the final agreement from AFSCM members and the city council. Businesses are blooming in Rockaway Beach, with Green Coast Market opening with a focus on locally sourced food and drink. Blue Water Fine Arts Gallery opened and is dedicated to showcasing exceptional artwork from both emerging and established artists. Seaquest Gifts have updated their space to further highlight local artisans with their Artisan Gallery on Miller Street. The Beach Bike reopened for pasta and pizza, and I will tell you, an excellent spinach salad. The Bay Ocean Food Court opened with two food trucks, Sassy Rocks and Thai Food. Taqueria Mendez and Tropical Grill food trucks open next to R and R Espresso. And we can look forward to Pelican Tap Room and Spirits of the West Distillery opening in the coming months. Tillamook Coast Visitors Association rolled out our next generation of Rockaway Beach The Bay Ocean Food Court opened with two food trucks, Sassy Rocks and Thai Food. Taqueria Mendez and Tropical Grill food trucks open next to R&amp;R Espresso. And we can look forward to Pelican Tap Room and Spirits of the West Distillery opening in the coming months. Tillamook Coast Visitors Association rolled out our next generation of Rockaway Beach shopping bags, small and large versions. The bags reflect the graphics on our next-generation garbage cans and include QR code access to our official visitor website, visitrockawaybeach.org. TCVA also added signs to Lake Lible Park and Anchor Street Park. The signs are elegant and robust, and they communicate a sense of permanence and quality. I hope everyone has had a chance to check them out. And then let's not forget about the tornado that touched down in Rockaway Beach on Veterans' Day. The most important news was that no one was seriously injured. Unfortunately, the EF0 tornado did leave a trail of damage to both public and private property. Damage to roofs, outbuildings, fences, power lines, windows, and trees was noted in an east-to-west path from the beach between Nahalem and North Third. The Neokani School District suffered the highest reported damage estimated to be between one-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to thank the Fire Department and Rockaway Beach Patrol Deputies for their quick response that night. Our Public Works Department and the Tillamook PUD personnel worked quickly and diligently to clean up the mess and return services to restaurants. We are fortunate to be served by such terrific first responders that take very good care of us. With the recent adoption of the city's five-year strategic plan, we can be assured that as Rockaway Beach continues to grow, it will do so on its own terms. The strategic plan is the result of nine months of community engagement. It outlines our community's shared vision for the future, our goals, and the steps we'll take to achieve them. Our fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget aligns allocation of city resources with the five-goal focus areas identified in the newly adopted strategic plan: public safety, economy, transportation and infrastructure, community engagement, and good governance. Let me conclude by acknowledging our city leaders. If you are present, please stand and remain standing as I say your name, and please hold your applause until they are all standing. Public Works Director Mary Mertz. Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson. Finance Chief, Fire Chief, Fire Chief Todd Hesse. City Planner Avram Tapia. Finance Director Marnie Johnston. City Recorder Melissa Tomston. And City Manager Luke Shepherd. These individuals love our community and work tirelessly to deliver top-tier service and move our city forward. We are blessed to have these individuals working for us. Thank you for your dedication to our beloved community and your accomplishments in the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Of course, all the individuals that these leaders supervise and volunteers in our community deserve our praise too. All of the staff in the city of Rockaway Beach and all of the volunteers work tirelessly each day to make the city we love, we love work smoothly. It truly takes a village, and we have amazing villagers. I would be remiss if I did not mention our governing body, the City of Rockaway Beach City Council. These individuals, Council President Penny Cheek, former City Councilor Elijah Franken, Councilor Kylie Conruff, Councilor Tom Martine, Councilor Mary McGinnis, acted together to develop city policy and legislation, worked collaboratively to move our city forward and make tough decisions. From what I've already seen of our newest council member, Pat Ryan, I know he will be a great addition to the governing team. Thank you all for your service to our beloved community. Finally, I want to thank you, our community, for all that you do to make the city of Rockaway Beach a shining star on the Oregon coast that visitors flock to every year. It is a distinct pleasure being the mayor of the city of Rockaway Beach, your mayor. Thank you for the opportunity and your continued support, and thank you for your time and attention for this message. All right, we'll move on to the Small Community Grant Recipient Report. We recognize and welcome Pam Hiller, Kylie Petry, and Jolene Chris Mooney to deliver their Small Community Grant Recipient Report. And I will add that this is the first report we're receiving under the new guidelines and structure, so I will say I looked at your report and it was two thumbs up.
Okay, okay. We also brought with us some pictures. I'll show you those pictures as we go along. We came today to thank you for the grant. It was a wonderful event. We had one-hundred-and-sixty-eight people come to the picnic. For those of you who don't know what we're talking about, we had a developmental disabilities, intellectual disabilities picnic over at Esther.
Close Baker.
I said something in Washington. And that was for people who have disabilities and their families, and so it's a time to come together and get to meet everybody. And the other part about it is that we have so much city involvement. We had the Sheriff Kane, and we had the Fire Department there, and we had, and we brought a list of all the people because I can't remember them all. But the most fun that they had was karaoke. We did karaoke, and we had food that was supplied by our small grant. And it's amazing to me, the joy that is at that event and the amount of people that want us to do it every month. And I keep on saying, "Thank you, but no." And I want to thank you guys for honoring us there because the people feel comfortable. They feel wanted and cared about. And we've asked them if they want to move to a new location in the next year, and everybody's like, "No, no, we like it here." And before I forget, I have to send a thank you to the Public Works because those guys worked their butts off. That day, we had a bathroom that broke down, and we were calling them, and you can see the pictures of some of the people, and we just had a blast. What would you like to say, my?
This is Jolene. Hi, I'm Jolene. Um, I think, sorry, that's okay. My voice carries, if you want me to. First, first impressions, I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity, for the facilities. It was fantastic. It has been every year. The parking is amazing. It's really accessible for our clients and their families. Again, the facilities, the restroom facilities, we had a little glitch, and it was very quickly taken care of. Picnic tables were supplied, the garbage was taken care of for us. It was just all around. It was a fantastic location. And then the help that the grant provided for entertainment, like she said, we had karaoke, we had face painting, we had masks that they got to build themselves, we had arts and crafts tables, and we had food. We had a full barbecue picnic, and all of those funds came from the grant to supply all of that entertainment for our clients, for their families, and for community members. We had a lot of people from the community that just walked up to the park to find out what's going on here. We're hearing music, we're hearing laughter, and they got to know some clients, some of our clients, but some of the community members that had developmental or intellectual disabilities. And this was an interaction that probably wouldn't have happened without that going on. So our goal in the future is hopefully to use funds next year when we reapply for, to get more community involvement, so not necessarily just the individuals we serve and their families, but the community as a whole. So again, thank you so much for that opportunity.
Did you copy anything?
No, that was, that was beautiful. So thank you again.
Actually, we are also looking for people who would like to participate on the advisory board the next year for putting a picnic together. So if you're interested at all, let me know. I come to these meetings pretty regularly, and I'm in the community, and if you tell the mayor, he sees me when he's on the sidewalk. I just might not hit him, but I think I'm very good. And the other thing is, I want to tell you that it was, it was very wonderful because we had the sheriff there, and people kept saying, "Why is the sheriff got to come? Why is you have a sheriff here?" And it was the best opportunity because we were able to explain that we want our people to be comfortable seeing them in uniform. We want them to know that these are safe people to talk to and to get some help with. And we got to, you know, it was natural. It came up, one of the parents asked, "Why you have a police officer here or a deputy here?" And we were able to explain it, and it was really a benefit for our young people. So anyway, are there any questions? I left a thank you card and a thing with, so any questions?
Questions or comments in council?
I have a grandson that has disabilities, and I could tell you as a parent, and I feel that I'm a parent, of his how much they appreciate what you just did. They love that. They love the attention, and they need it.
They need it, exactly.
And they're being accepted in a society that does not always accept them. So I really congratulate you for what you've done.
Well, and the other thing I have to tell you as a city, I have two sons who have autism, and I moved here to Rockaway, and I see such effort to make sure that people are accepted for who they are and where they're at, and such, and even the businesses are willing to talk about hiring and those kinds of things. I just really think that this is a very welcoming city, and I'm glad I settled here.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. That was, like, I hope that we get something this detailed from all of those because seeing the pictures, you know, you can read about things, but seeing the pictures and seeing the smiles is, is really, it makes me happy, and I hope that we can expand on this and make it bigger and more welcoming, and yeah, let's get the public in there, let's find more families that want to participate, and.
One of the, here, one of the beautiful things is that it's on the weekend with the Fourth of July celebration, and the people coming to the picnic feel like they're somehow involved in that whole celebration, which is wonderful, which is wonderful. Don't worry, we're going to apply again, but I don't know how big we're going to get, but we're going to apply, and any information that you guys have or any suggestions, please let us know.
I'll give you one now.
Yes, ma'am.
Please apply for more money. Well, seriously, the grant is up to five thousand dollars, and your organization applied for far, far less than that. The person cooking the hamburgers said he needs a new grill really badly.
That's our.
So, so please, you know, assess your needs and apply for more because it is one of the most worthwhile things we do as the city councillors, give money to people with disabilities.
Well, that gives us a reason to get together and plan a little bigger celebration or maybe a two-day celebration or something we can field. Because I was like trying to be conservative, so.
I won't be conservative again. Let me get some of them up to the five thousand later.
Okay, there we go. I can do that. Any questions from the audience at all?
All right. I wanted to say one quick thing, and I forgot to say this. They brought the drones, and it was incredibly popular. There was a picture floating around, so I'm not sure if you guys got to see it or not, but they brought the drone, and it is very, very popular with a lot of our clients are very into robots and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to say it was perfect timing for you guys getting the drone and the picnic. So, thank you.
And it was also wonderful that we were able to support the paper that the chief has that you, for emergency management, where you get people's names on a list for if they need extra help. And I don't think people knew that even existed, and so I was able to talk to everybody about it. I don't know if they filled out the form, but at least you started talking about, "How do we let people know where you're at?" You know, if you have a problem, how are they going to come find you? And then I was really happy to see on the Facebook page that you're doing that outreach where the signs go in the window. Let me know, and I can do outreach with you, so.
The man's back there, Chief Hesse.
He'll find me, he'll. Don't worry about that one. Anything else?
I want to say that I've taken Kelly to every one of these picnics, and he loves it, and as soon as he finds out there's one coming, he calls me every week, "It's time to go, it's the time to go." He just, he loves every minute of it.
I'm glad, I'm glad. We're working on other services that we hope to come to the community. One of the things that I'm really working hard with is with Premier Community Services to get some job coaches placed here in Rockaway so that we can start to get people employed. And we need a job coach because you can't just put somebody in a business. But this is a great city to be employed, so. All righty, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work you do. We'll now move on to staff reports. The Chair recognizes Chief Todd Hesse to report for the Fire Department. Come on down.
Come on down. Well, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager of Rockaway Beach, you'll find in front of you the Fire Department Council Report for the month of July of 2025. But as us, each month, we start out, we talk about the runs and calls and activities of the department. You'll notice we had ninety, fifty-two nine-one-one calls last month. Again, medical was the most, at thirty-one. Our moisture levels somehow changed a lot of the fire alarms. We had a lot more fire alarms than normal we had to eat last month. Five structured fire responses. Lucky to say that most of the damage was minimal, and most of it was out of our town. It was Nahalem and Garibaldi. We did have one water rescue, one motor vehicle crash, and several small outside fire responses. Training continued with nineteen trainings, and we had forty-eight non-emergent calls. We, that averaged out to almost three-point-eight-three calls or events every day. So our staff and volunteers were extremely busy, but I got to tell you, so I told you when nine-eleven or nine-one-one calls last month was fifty-two, in the first twenty days of this month, we've already had fifty-one nine-one-one calls. We answered fifty-first nine-one-one this morning. We've been extremely busy. Do not ask me why, because I'm not sure. I can pinpoint any, any identifier of why, but I can tell you, we are busy. We're at the level we were about the middle of October last year, so we're about two full months ahead on call volume. And it's definitely pushing our staff to their limits. Year-to-date calls, if you notice, three-hundred-nine-one-one calls already, one-hundred-and-seventy-five non-emergent, and eighty-nine trainings. That adds up to five-hundred-and-sixty-four incidents and activities so far this year. We're on pace for probably a solid nine-hundred this year or more, so definitely very busy. Trainings, we did a lot last month on surf rescue, fire operations. We went to the lake and drafted, practiced hose streams, and that EMT class continued. This month, we're going to be working on some wildland classes, EMT classes, and hopefully completing our firefighter one academy. On the second page, before I go through our beach report, I want to introduce our summer staff. Again, I think multi-last month met, you guys can stand up for a second. Shawna Yose and Fiera Benazia. They've been really a very helpful this year. They responded nine-one-one calls, they're out on the beach every morning and every afternoon, providing our safety messages and putting out beach fires, little campfires, public education, and on the side, they've been reorganizing the station. So if you're bored, want to come by, you have to see some of the changes they've made over there in the last couple of weeks. Pretty, pretty amazing. But I had to call them out is what a, what a wonderful help they are. Thank you, please. But I wanted to introduce you ahead of time, when we look up at the top part that it looks like our report was for the month of July, I changed the report. I thought it was getting a little kind of boring or stagnant, so I turned Shawna loose on a new spreadsheet and data collection, and I wanted to, a couple of things I thought were easy to point out. They extinguished thirty-four fires on the beach last month. They used, they kept a doubt on how many tanks of water, and they used twenty-four tanks of water last year, so sometimes they were coming back two or three times a day to get water to go down and put out those fires. A new category, the third one down, and I think everybody liked this one, was the amount of dog biscuits they gave out. With our visitors, everybody has to have a dog on the beach, so they identified that as one of our education and way to engage the public, and they gave out one-hundred-and-eighteen dog biscuits last month. Valuable, wonderful program. They're out there working, and I really was proud of that. And next one was garbage collected, so they're not just going out there driving around, they were picking up garbage, and you'll notice there's ten, well, that's ten full bags of garbage is what they picked up off the beach around the campfires and ran them around. So I really appreciate they're trying to be good stewards of our beach, and they talked to, well, between them and the volunteers and myself, we talked to forty-seven people last month on water safety, fire safety. fire safety, get out of the water, um, here's how you burn, here's the rules. Um, so we're, we're definitely keeping busy and I like this new format. It's a little easier to follow. We'll keep you up on the dog biscuit report each month. Um, emergency management update on um, I, I think this is really important and some of you will really like this one. So as Pam brought out, we're going to be out in, in Rockaway this Saturday from 10 o'clock on. Uh, the search team, the preparedness team, whoever is available. And we're gonna, you're gonna see this envelope on your doorknob um, in a bag. And inside this little packet, I'm not gonna open it. I may make you open it um, in a few days. But this has all kinds of information, of safety information. It's got QR codes for all our emergency contacts. It has an emergency uh, form for if you need assistance. Um, it's got, I, I even wrote a letter. So no pictures, just a letter, but it shows all the instructions of what's in this packet and what you can get out of it. A help and safe sticker in case of a, a major disaster and uh, and a refrigerator magnet. So all kinds of good material and every resident, vacation rental, hotel, we're trying to put one in each and every residence and room. So that's been a year-long project, but it is finally, well, thank you, Fiera. She stuffed a lot of envelopes the last couple of weeks. Uh, we appreciate it. So um, and then to finish up here, uh, I was hoping that tonight was the night we were going to go out and look at our new ladder truck. Um, it's in Spokane. It made it that far, but it had a, a wheel seal blew out on the way from South Dakota here. So it's at Frankdiner being repaired. Uh, once that's repaired, we should see delivery. I'm hopeful next week. Um, we have training set up for September 8th and 9th with Rosenbauer's. So our staff can be um, formally trained and we have a tentative date that should be pretty firm of September 27th is, is what we anticipate will be our push-in ceremony date that the community will be invited to. Which is going to be a huge, big day. Really excited. Um, see, I think, oh, and the last thing I was going to tell you is, or two things. Fourth of July um, was busy as usual. Um, uh, some of you might have noticed, I watched the parade, the fire department had a very limited response in the parade this year. It's because uh, we had a 911 call occur like five minutes before the parade started. So we, we had to go, I go take care of business. I know that's hard to imagine, but uh, we went and took care of our citizen need. Um, the uh, everything was pretty, uh, I'd say went really well through the fourth. It was uh, uh, pretty nice. The fireworks were amazing. Uh, we sold out all our sweatshirts, which we've never done before. Um, Sparky was out there working hard, providing information. Um, we did get out in the neighborhoods more this year, um, trying to uh, get through our high traffic areas where we had some problem fireworks events. And uh, we saw relatively um, light uh, illegal firework here. And had, happy to announce no fireworks, related fires or injuries were reported. And the last thing, we are still under a burn ban. I just wanted to remind people, cause as you, as most of you are aware, we did have a small fire the other day um, that made Facebook. We want to make sure everybody knows that we had a, a small fire started by a transient um, up in the, above Washington Street. Actually, I can say I went through the tsunami evacuation trail because it was directly on that. Um, and it was small. It was no threat to any property or values. Um, but we did uh, it took a few hours to put it out. I was burning some very dry materials three or four feet deep. And uh, even though it was a day after an inch of rain. So um, our, our fuels that are, it didn't penetrate very well. So anyway, I just want to have to, be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thanks for questions.
I, I have a ring. Oh, sorry. I didn't see Penny's hand.
Just congratulations on that fire too. I listened to you on the scanner and you had trucks all over the place. So I'm glad that you got it out when you did. It was, would have been disastrous had it taken off.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. We had good resources. We used ODF and, and, and other local Garibaldi and we were able to quickly contain it.
Um, would you tell us when the great shakeout is coming? Cause I think it's only a month and a half away.
Uh, we can sure start to announce that. Okay. It is Thursday, October 16th at 11:11 a.m. We will be hosting a, a great shakeout event again. We will be, next month will give you the instructions of what citizens are expected to do. And we will also put a functional exercise along with that. So your search team, your preparedness team and your radio team will be activated so they can practice their skills. But yeah, October 16th at 11:11 a.m.
And for people who are not familiar with that, that's uh, a practice evacuation in case of a tsunami.
Exactly. It's a practice of your evacuation routes. Um, at 11:11 a.m., we simulate uh, an event and you need to get to your nearest evacuation site. Okay, thank you.
I can't sit and just drink my wine and pick words.
Well, you can. That's where we have a free will.
Um, thank you, you've been fire chief. All right. The chair recognizes Deputy Kevin Grogan to report for the Rockaway Beach Patrol.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, I just want to go back to the picnic that we had. Um, I've never had so many people request me to arrest their siblings and family members. Ultimately, I did have to inform them that denying uh, forced serving of hot dogs is not a crime. So that was very well received. It was a great event. Love doing that kind of stuff. Um, so as we all know, we're in the final portion of summer. And the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a, a lot more visitors due to the end of summer. And we're also going to be having kids going back to school. So that means we're going to have to be getting used to 20 miles per hour there, all the different speed changes. So we've got to make sure we're being lawful and paying attention to those all across the highway. And uh, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about the month of July. Uh, we saw a large surge of visitors for the most part. Um, fairly peaceful. The weekend overall was very busy with multiple thefts being reported just on that weekend alone. Uh, we did a report to several problem houses for fireworks that had been identified in the Rockaway Beach community. Uh, us patrol deputies uh, attempted to contact the residents and inform them that they are on a radar for illegal fireworks. Uh, after that, uh, the city and Sheriff Josh Brown collaborated to have a dedicated fireworks patrol on July 5th. Uh, this did not yield the results that we hoped for as there were nearly no fireworks seen while the patrol was active. We're working with the city manager, uh, Shepherd and have ideas for next year. So just a couple of notable calls for the month of July. An assault was reported on the beach the night of the fourth. There are no arrests in this case currently. Two vehicle break-ins were reported. Uh, we have not identified suspects in this case. Two reports of bicycles being stolen from the homes were made. No suspect identified. A report of someone forging identification was taken and this case is under investigation. An assault uh, consisting of domestic violence was reported and a suspect was arrested. As I talked about the 20 mile marker hours earlier, um, these signs are up. They are active. We are patrolling. Um, pay attention. That goes for residents, visitors. We're seeing a really big impact on it. Um, the only little thing that I really want to mention is just because we're in a hurry to go home, doesn't mean we get to rush through the neighborhoods. I get that it's 25 in the neighborhoods, but that doesn't mean you get to go as fast as you want. So we're going to make sure we're looking out for that and uh, just give everybody a couple of warnings. In a couple of weeks, I'm going through, because I mean, even me coming home from the, the work or spread myers or something, I forget that. No, it's 20 down to the white chappelle. So just pay attention to that. And uh, other than that, I'll take any questions.
I just want to say that there's just the speed. I mean, it's something that we talk about every single month. Um, and I have noticed that I've seen more deputy presence on side streets, which I, which I super appreciate. But just, you know, for the, the community, they just want to see you guys. They want to see you. I saw you this afternoon sitting in Lake Lidl. They just need to see you on these high traffic side roads. Driving through, parked, running radar, writing a report. It doesn't matter. Like, that's the biggest thing that I just keep getting from the public is they just need to see you guys. And then kind of on a, more of a personal note, but for the city is the crosswalks. Man, people are not stopping this summer.
Yeah.
Like at all. I mean, there's been a couple of times that I've literally stood on the side of the road going, hello, like, does anybody see me? And again, I think that just having, you know, we, we're still at three deputies, right?
Correct.
Okay. You know, having three full-time deputies, you know, again, just making your presence known. Cause boy, when you guys are sitting there, suddenly magically people see us standing at the crosswalks.
That's what people don't see us sitting.
Maybe that's time for you to go say hello.
Yes.
So, but that's just my request is just continue to be on those side streets. Continue to make your presence known, you know, driving up and down, see, you know, the people seeing you, sitting there, running radar, whatever you guys are doing on the side of the road. But I have noticed in the last month, I have seen you guys more on side streets and I really appreciate it. And I know the public, because I've heard from the public, the public really appreciates it too.
And just like we had requests of us, you know, checking out Lake Lidl for things that we take into account, we'll go where we are.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. And also um, it's salmon season and there's a lot of boat rinsing happening, just saying.
Yeah. I have a question about the Fourth of July. You said that no fireworks were going off when, when Sheriff's deputies were on patrol. What um, what can citizens or residents do to alert you of, of fireworks at a particular house?
So fireworks are a tough subject. Um, documenting it, you know, uh, having the fireworks going off is a big time thing. Having a face match to fireworks is another thing. Um, I know we have a lot of calls throughout the night, especially later in the evening, you know, around the midnight times where people are calling. It's always season in the air. Just give us a non-emergency call. At least give us an idea of where we can start looking for people. Cause it's more often than not, it's not just one thing more to go off. So it's a quick call to uh, non-emergency documented. If you see it happening and then you have to have a discussion and, because mainly with fireworks, we have to observe the fireworks going off or something along those lines to work and enforce citations law.
We will make progress on this.
Yes, we will. We started pretty good this year. We had a good plan and as crazy as it sounds, it was very, very quiet. I know I've been in Rockaway for many years. It was very strange. So, but. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Public Works Director Mary Mertz to report for Public Works.
Thank you for having me this evening. I will be presenting the August Public Works Department report for you. And so I'm going to start this evening, going over some of our monthly highlights. Um, we'll start with our water uh, department. Um, we are starting our leak detection study. Uh, just this week, we issued a notice of intent to award. The project is basically a study of our entire water system, looking for leaks. Um, so we can find them and then address them. That project is getting funded through a sustainable infrastructure planning project grant that um, Superintendent Emerson received on behalf of the city. Uh, we're also taking off the North Pacific Street project. We spoke about that at our workshop. If anyone is interested in more details about that, um, there is a presentation available under the workshop. Um, happy to provide any information if anyone has any questions. But uh, that is a pretty large, large infrastructure project. We've got water, sewer, storm and heaving all happening on North Pacific uh, between North Third and North of Ninth. Um, and then I guess our biggest news for the water department is uh, getting a little bit of rain here and there. Um, so a huge difference to Jetty Creek. So we should all be really happy to see rainy clouds when they roll in. Um, for roads, um, the Public Works Department submitted a grant application to the ODOT DLCD Transportation Growth Management Program, seeking $220,000 to update our transportation system plan. And if we are awarded, the updates to our plan would include uh, building a resiliency, emergency preparedness and multimodal transportation for our community. Uh, you'll also see a new culvert project happening on Highway 101 at North First. Uh, that's a culvert repair project. Uh, city's partnering with ODOT on that. And we issued a notice of intent to award as the week before last. Um, and we anticipate that that will probably kick off, um, I think the end of this month, but we're still forming updates with our contractor. Uh, for sewer, we did our ocean outfall inspection. Uh, good news, the outfall's in good shape. So we don't have to do any work on that at this time. And then staffing, we have hired a seasonal employee to join us and help alleviate some of the brush cutting, trash cleanup that uh, Public Works is taking care of on a daily basis around town. Um, ongoing projects, uh, that includes the Salmonberry Trail Planning and Design. Uh, that is our 3% uh, design and planning that we've done so far. We're just wrapping that grant in work up. Um, we're still working on the OPRD Lake Lidl restroom uh, parking and uh, parking lot improvement project. Um, that is currently under review with SHIPO. There was an archaeological assessment of the site that was done. So now SHIPO will look that over. That's the State Historic Preservation Office is reviewing that. Um, once that has been reviewed and okayed, funding will actually be released. We hope to uh, tackle that project so it's ready for next summer. Um, Jetty Water Creek, uh, Jetty Creek watershed acquisition and planning is uh, a really busy project for us. Got a lot of different funding sources. Uh, we're going to be kicking off the Forest Management Advisory Committee, I think is what we're calling them. Uh, kicking off with our first meeting uh, tomorrow. Um, so that's really exciting to have that project moving forward. Uh, it's just a huge win for the city. Uh, and then we have our wastewater rate study. Uh, that's currently still with staff at its beginning stages. The public can expect to start getting some information mailed out to them to, so people can learn what a rate study is, how rates are set. And then uh, what they can anticipate uh, to see in the future. Uh, but I can tell you from a budgetary standpoint, uh, waste, wastewater study uh, is necessary. And our fund is okay for this year, but in the future years it will not be. Uh, we haven't raised rates since 2009. So uh, we'll be sharing more information about that project as we move forward. And then um, next week starts the uh, Jetty Creek Woody Debris Placement Project. That is a group effort between uh, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Tillmack Estuary Partners and the city, uh, placing woody debris in the upper portions of the Jetty Creek watershed uh, to provide uh, better water quality, retention and habitat. Right. And then um, some upcoming projects, um, the Pacific Street project, um, we're going to be kicking that off shortly. Um, the leak detection study that we just got funded for uh, should get underway next month. Uh, the Highway 101 culvert repair again should be happening toward the end of this month. Uh, we'll begin recruiting for a code enforcement officer. Um, I haven't started that work yet, but it is high on the priority to-do list. And then we have the Nadona Water Main Upgrades, uh, another big project for the city. And a multi-million dollar project uh, that's replacing water line in Nadona on beach, uh, Nadona and then part of Geneva. Um, so that will be a project we hope to kick off at the beginning of 2026. And then we're also uh, working on implementing a new program called Seek Life Fix, which is a um, technology reporting portal for the public to be able to communicate directly with Public Works staff about things like potholes, clear vision issues, uh, anything that the public is experiencing in real time that Public Works will be able to respond to. So uh, we're at the very beginning stages of um, just learning about how that program works and we'll be getting it implemented. So have some time for you uh, in the near future on that. I think it'll be really exciting and moving Rockaway forward into the technological age for Public Works. And then um, I just want to finish with an acknowledgement of our Public Works staff. Uh, I know everyone here knows that they are great, but I just wanted to share this quick little story. So on July 11th, there was a car accident in Wheeler. You may have noticed um, some homes lost power in Rockaway because of that. Our water plant was one of the affected buildings. So um, that power outage caused a glitch at the water treatment plant. Uh, power came back on in about two and a half hours. Uh, our plant operators responded. They restarted the water treatment plant and then restored operations by 11:00 p.m. Um, while we have incidents like this, occasionally they'll disrupt other services. Like you expect to have a power outage, but you don't ever expect to have a disruption in your water service or sewer service to your home. Like that's because you've got great staff who work to make sure that never happens for you. Um, so I just wanted to give a shout out to all the guys who really are so dedicated to the city and to the community um, to make sure that we all have that service that we can rely on all the time. And that's what I've got for tonight.
As soon as any comments or questions.
No, sir. No. We, we've just finished a session in the workshop with uh, Public Works Director Mertz. And so, so this is kind of the second time we've heard most of this and thank you so much for the work that the Public Works. much for the work that Public Works is doing.
Lovely to be a part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mertz. Well, the floor is yours, City Manager Shepherd, to report on the city.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Council. We actually have a fairly light agenda, relatively speaking, for tonight, and which is fine with me. August has been incredibly busy. September is going to be busy. It's nice to have a lighter agenda every once in a while. Let's see here. All right. So I'll go over the agenda items with you real quickly. And then I've got some project updates. Some of it's been covered by other staff already, but I've got a few other details to fill in. So first up tonight is consideration to continue a public hearing on two ordinances related to flood hazard overlay development. This is something we talked about in June. It's something the Planning Commission worked on prior to that. It's something that's been on our minds for years now. This is all related to FEMA buy off and rules that will regulate how we develop in a floodplain here in Rockaway Beach and the county and other cities that have floodplains. But in June, the council motioned to continue until August, and that was because this issue's found itself in court again, and there was a lawsuit, and the judge issued a stay for 60 days. So we continued till August. It's still in court. They haven't reached a conclusion. The judge extended the stay in the case, hoping that both sides can come to some agreement. They have not done that yet. And so if the city were to continue this another 60 days, it'll give you more time to see the court case play out before taking any action. Next up is consideration to declare community grant complete. I think you heard Pam's presentation. The Developmental Disability Program was awarded $1,000 to hold a picnic. They held their picnic. They completed their project complete report. They came to the council meeting presented. And so the last step is for the council to deem their grant complete. And you already saw, but I had it in my presentation, before I knew Pam would like to see their photos put up there. But when I was looking through their completion report, I just, I had to put these photos up. I knew you guys would want to see them. Because what better, what better reason to have a community grant program than if not for programs like this? It's just really neat. Looks like they had a superhero or Marvel theme at their event. But I just want to thank the city council and the Budget Committee for continuing to support our community grant program. It's unique and pretty special. Next up on the agenda is Resolution Number 44 to authorize the award for the North Pacific Street project. Council Director Mertz talked about this in the workshop and also in her presentation. So I won't go into too many details, but we do have the low bid in hand of just over $1 million by advanced excavation. And this project is going to see asphalt, stormwater, sewer, water main replacement on Pacific Street, North Pacific Street between Third and Ninth. And we think we can kick it off in October, major substantial completion in November, and possibly we can come back in the spring to finish up paving if we don't get a window to pave in the November timeframe. And then Resolution 45 establishes immunity from damages as amended by Senate Bill 179. This is better known as recreational immunity. I think back in 2023, there was a lawsuit in Newport, and cities lost recreational immunity. So they lost the immunity from lawsuits from people who injured themselves while recreating on public property. And you might recall at that time, a lot of the beach access points along the coast were closed down. Cities were afraid of litigation. The legislature passed a temporary fix last year, and then Senate Bill 179 is the permanent fix. So cities can regain recreational immunity. The one caveat is, is Senate Bill 179 requires cities to opt in to recreational immunity. And so a city can opt in through this resolution. All right. And the last two resolutions tonight, 46 and 47, they're both resolutions supporting grant applications to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The first one is a grant for the city, so we can have some technical assistance to update its comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. And then Resolution 47 supports a grant for the county and other cities in Tillmack County to collaborate on some of the Senate Bill 406 implementation measures, middle housing measures. And if you're interested to know more about any of those, our new city planner did a wonderful presentation at the workshop. We'll have his presentation online if anybody's curious, wants some more details about that. And then I've got some project updates for you all. And Public Works Director Mertz did a great job, but I want to show off a little bit more about what our Public Works Department is up to. I've got a construction timeline here. It shows our various projects, various large capital improvement projects, and when we're going to see construction happening, likely in Rockaway Beach. And so you can see the Salmonberry Trail doesn't have anything shown. I'll go into that in a little detail here in a minute. But with Pacific Street, Lake Lidle Phase One, all the out of water work, and then the Donna Beach Water Main Upgrade, starting in October, and except for December and January, we're going to see major construction projects taking place in Rockaway Beach all through the budget year, which is really nice to see. These three projects combined alone represent $5 million in capital investment in Rockaway Beach. So it's pretty neat to see. It'll be busy, definitely be busy. I'll give you guys a little update on the Salmonberry Trail project, a little more detail. So for about a year now, a little more than, more than a year, we've had consultants working on a planning, project planning, and 30% design for the Rockaway Beach section of the Salmonberry Trail. And this work is done because of a $750,000 grant from the Oregon Community Pass Program. And, you know, planning, planning and up to 30% design doesn't sound like all that much. But your initial planning, which and design, which is what this is, that's where you find out, you know, is your project going to be feasible? How much is it going to cost? It's typically the most time consuming, sometimes the most expensive part of the planning and design for a project. You know, so during the initial design period, you're getting your survey work done, all your studies, your hydraulic studies, environmental studies, geotechnical studies, archaeological studies, you name it. And you start to get an idea of what the costs are going to be for the project. And so the consultants have been working on this since April, and we're nearing the end now. And what they've been able to put together based on the design criteria from the OCP grant program is a very, very nice, but a very expensive project. And so just as an example, late last year, we applied with the consultants for the construction grant funding. And that's the next step after you planning, design, you do construction. And it's a two step process. You do your planning and design through the OCP, and then you apply for construction funding. So initially, we applied for $4.6 million to do the northern half of our section, so from the wayside to Beach Street. And it's a long process, and our consultants worked with the scoping team from the Oregon Department of Transportation. And through that process, and as more information came in from the design, design work that the consultants were doing, the length of this trail, we were going to be able to build with this $4.6 million, shrunk from, I think, 12,000 feet, which is the original wayside to Beach Street, down to, I think the last was 19th to Beach Street. So a very expensive project. When you look at your price per foot per user, it's simply not very competitive. And so OCP did not award funding for construction or final design of the Salmonberry Trail project here in Rockaway Beach. And that's where we stand now. The funding landscape is, has been devastated. This program, the OCP program, last year's, I think they awarded $50 to $60 million. We're hearing next year it's going to be a $5 million program. So the landscape's been devastated. So unless another opportunity presents itself for our Salmonberry Trail section, you know, we're kind of at a point where we have to park this project. And that's just, that's just the reality of it. Unless another opportunity presents itself, that's where it's going to sit. And we'll keep an eye open for additional funding. But we're going to need millions and millions of dollars to get this done. And just want to make sure you know that's where we're at. In better news, though, is our Lake Lidle project or out of water project. This one's kind of exciting. We're going to put in new restrooms with utilities, so put in water, sewer, power. The toilets will be flushable. They'll be ADA compliant. We'll have ADA compliant parking and ADA access to the restrooms. We'll have additional parking on 12th Street. And so this project's ready to go. It's shovel ready. And we think we can get it done in February through April next year, break ground and get it, get it, get it put in place in time for summer. Total cost, $866,000 is the estimate from the engineers. We've got a grant for half of that. So it's a great return, great return on investment for Rockaway Beach for this project. And probably next month or the month after, Public Works Director Mertz will have much more information on what the, what the process is going to be for the in water work, where all the fun, the fun's going to happen. But we're set to go for the facilities out of the water. We're just waiting for the State Historic Preservation Office to give the state the green light, issue the money. We talked a little bit about Pacific Street, actually quite a bit in the last four hours, the workshop and the council meeting. So I won't go into any details here. But again, this one's ready to go. It's going to start in October, go through November. There's a chance we can get the paving done in November. Sometimes there's a window for that. That's ideal. If not, we'll pave in the spring. But the idea with this project was to get the road paved. To get the road paved, you had to replace the utilities. So we had to do work with the sewer system. We'll do work with the water system. We've got storm drain work. And we're trying to avoid, because of where it is downtown on North Pacific Street, avoid any construction in the summer season. So, so we're stuck, stuck in the shoulder season, doing our best to get it done. And then the water main, the Donna Beach Water Main Replacement, this will, this will finish us out for the budget year, for the last three months of our fiscal year. We'll hit water mains on Beach Drive, the Donna Avenue, and Geneva Avenue. It's a $3 million project. Half of it is reimbursable. The other half is funded through a very low interest rate loan to the Infrastructure Finance Authority. And we'll have construction April through June. Like I said, this will be, this will be a big test to see how much water loss reduction we achieve by replacing some of these old lines out here. And then everything's kind of coming into play for Jetty Creek, the acquisition of the lower half of Jetty Creek. I think I told you before, we secured a $1.4 million grant from OWEB to cover partial purchase and also the appraisal work. We're very close to receiving the funding package from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund program, half of which would be refundable, half of which would be, would be a low interest rate loan. The appraisal is set to go. Atterbury Consultants has been selected. They're going to get their work done anytime now. Forest management planning started. We've got a forester selected. We've got a kickoff meeting with the advisory committee tomorrow. They've got a site visit under Jetty Creek the next day. And so we are still on track for 2026 purchase for the lower half of the watershed, which is, which is amazing. And then my favorite thing to talk about, I love to do staff highlights, and I wanted to highlight Mikhail Hesse tonight. She's an administrative assistant, works at City Hall here, been here for a little over three years. And she's, she's done a really good job of making herself a very, one of our critical employees, not just at City Hall, but across the city. There's not much that the city does that doesn't cross her desk, whether it's fire or Public Works or, or planning or whatever it is. She has a big part in everything we do. So I put some stats together I thought were interesting to show you all. So one of the, one of the things, Kale, as she likes to be called, one of the things she does is accounts payable. So she pays all of our vendor invoices. And so she pays about, processes and pays about 1,000 invoices every year across our 14 city funds and for a total of 3.4 million dollars in checks that she's cutting. So it's pretty impressive. She's in charge of utility billing. So she puts over 15,000 invoices every year and generates about 3.9 million in revenue from that. She works with our finance director. She helps with payroll, accounts receivable, bank reconciliations, monthly balancing, business licenses. And over the three years, she's also been a part of a lot of the improvement and modernizations we've done with our, with our billing system and how we operate as a city. And I just, I just want to recognize Kale for everything she does for us and keeps us going. And she's just, she's a great member of the team. And we wouldn't want to be here without her. So. And then here's a list of what we have going on next month. Just want to call out a few special meetings. We've got a special public hearing on September 9, where we revisit, revisit Luma Remand. And then on September 30, if needed, we've got a special meeting to hopefully reach a decision on that one. That's what I have for you all tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right. Thank you very much, City Manager Shepherd. We'll move on to public hearing. Consideration to continue public hearing on Ordinance 2025-05, amending zoning ordinances related to flood hazard overlay, and the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-06, amending comprehensive plan related to flood hazard overlay to November 12, 2025. The court extended the initial 60 day stay in the proceedings of the case Oregonians for Flood Plan Protection versus FEMA. The city intends to continue the matter of the scheduled public hearing on our floodplain amendments until the case plays out. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council continue the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-05, amending zoning ordinances related to flood hazard overlay, and the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-06, amending comprehensive plan related to flood hazard overlay to the regular council meeting on November 12, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we would continue the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-5, amending the zoning ordinance related to the flood overlay until November 12, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion.
Aye. It is moved and seconded. That Rockaway Beach City Council continue the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-05, amending zoning ordinances related to flood hazard overlay, and the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-06, amending comprehensive plan related to flood hazard overlay to the regular council meeting on November 12, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Is there any discussion from council?
No, I just want to say the hesitation at first was not because we don't like this. It's because we were all so polite, waiting for somebody else to do it. Just saying that.
The polite council.
The polite council.
Counsel Ryan, any comments?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counsel Conra.
Yes.
Counsel Martine.
Yes.
Counsel McGinnis.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Before we begin public comments on non agenda items, I'd like to address a recent warning. I was made aware that I have not been consistent in how I handle requests to make public comments from those who arrive after the meeting has begun. I agree that this is not acceptable. Please accept my apology for this mistake. Going forward, I will not accept the request to make public comment from those who arrive after the meeting is called to order. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observation of Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon. can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the sign up sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely for public comment?
I have Daniel Howlett.
Anyone else? Okay. The chair, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Just for the, for the audience's awareness, we do have a 40-minute timeline for public comment and we just made it. We have 10 individuals who wish to speak tonight, which hits our 40-minute timing. So the chair recognizes Robin Swain. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Robin Swain, 113 South Miller. First of all, I'm the troublemaker from last month, coming from treatments and raised tasks. So it's not on the mayor or anybody else. That was me. This time I made it in time after treatment. So here we go. And I apologize for.
Okay. No need to. Thank you. No need to.
Okay. So the in-hand hat is on. For those of you who are not aware, that's Nia County Arts Music and Cultural Foundation. We do the Rockaway Riders Rendezvous and we're just coming up. Our Rockaway Beach First Annual Music Festival, a two-day event. It was phenomenal. And we want to give a shout out to Logan and everybody when we had issues with the power. They were joining up on the spot, helping us get going, getting the music going and everything. So a lot of the businesses that I've already talked to said it was their second busiest day of the season. We made sure the MC was promoting every single business in town, in between bands and, and things like that. And we just wanted to give a big shout out to Public Works and to the city for helping us make this fundraiser for the high school music department. Such a success. We will have more detail when we do our grant report. But it was just a thank you. It was a wonderful weekend and we look forward to this becoming the annual event for the music department. Any questions from the council? All righty.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Tammy Gover, Govr. Please, hmm?
Gover.
Gover, good. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
I'm Tamara Gover and we live on, on Donna, in Donna Beach, in Donna. And we were there for five years. I'm just here in the proposal of the Salmonberry Trail. I'm here for what I had heard about taking up the railroad tracks. And I heard there was a proposal to Tillmack Bay, who's in the charge of the railroad tracks, that that's not, that someone had put a proposal to take up the railroad tracks between 19th to Donna, our beach. And I'm here to say that I am not, I'm opposing that option if that person has actually presented it to them. I, I have walked by the things and I see why they feel that that's an easier way. But I think we need to think about historically, those are the railroad tracks. And I also think as Rockaway Beach, we need to think of the coastal community, not just Rockaway Beach community. The things that were proposed, the reason why you wanted to go to Beach Street and that I don't think it merits the money that it's going to cost to, to put it in. And pulling up the tracks to me is not an option that a lot of people would be going for. So I just wanted you guys to know that some of us feel that that shouldn't be an option. But alongside, yes, but not on the tracks.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Shirley Peters. Please approach the podium, state your, Shirley.
I'm trying to Kevin.
Okay. And Kevin, your name is?
Kevin Plain.
Kevin.
K E L E E N. I think I remember some of those. We've signed them together.
Do we get people eight minutes? I don't think so.
No, no, I don't need.
Kevin wants to sub in for Shirley. I'm not going to complain about that. But state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Kevin Plain, sitting, sitting Wheeler and I'm also on the City Wheeler Legal Committee. And I'm here to talk about the Salmonberry Trail. Previous speaker I've talked to, this information came to us in kind of by surprise because we're actually hoping to expand our rail service more up to Wheeler. So really at this point, I'm just kind of wondering if this is true, that the city of Rockaway has proposed that to the Port of Tillmack? And if so, if there's any public record or reports that would show what you guys are thinking? And then also I'm not looking for a dialogue, but if somebody could just summarize what you're thinking, because it seems like just from prior speakers that providing access to people with disabilities is something important. Everybody's for a walking trail, but eliminating the rail service is going to eliminate the possibility for a lot of people with disabilities to take a really beautiful trip. So it would seem to be inconsistent with the community values I heard tonight. So not looking for a dialogue, but if you could just give us a clue as to the rationale for this proposal, if you've actually made it, that would be great.
Happy to speak with you after the meeting or at another time, but this isn't the place for, for that, that, that report. Okay. Thank you. The chair recognizes Larry Oswald. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Mayor of council, Larry Oswald, 6080 Highway 101 North, Tillamook. Retired individual from Oregon State Parks. Came out here with Oregon State Parks to manage the Aylon Bay. Before that, Clark County, Nevada is manager of Parks Construction. Before that, manager of parks for City of Henderson for operations and construction. Reason I'm here is to introduce myself. As I said, I'm a homeowner here on the Oregon coast, but also a business owner. We operate Twins Ranch, which is Twins Ranch camping, Twins Ranch catering and event equipment, Twins Ranch capping, Garibaldi, Twins Ranch pet grooming and boarding, and also rail recs, Twins Ranch rail recs. I'm not here to discuss anything about the Salmonberry Trail, but I do offer this, my contact information and anything that I can do to help with this process, because I know you've talked to consultants. I have completed projects, not just in the large cities, but also here on the coast. One of them most notably was with the city of Manzanita to extend their walking and biking trails from the city throughout the perimeter of the Aylon Bay State Park. And I'm here to tell you, it's not going to cost millions and millions of dollars to do that. One of the other things I was responsible for was after the storm of 2007, was the repair and the effort to put back in operation the Saddle Mountain Trail, which was completely wiped out with the microburst we had. That was done with a, a set of inmate crews from South Fork and a little bit of money in, in to get that back and operational, especially dealing with difficult situations. So again, I offer my assistance, my experience and training with anything that you would need with this project. And again, that's all I had to say. I just thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Paul Daniels. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Okay. Thank you. I'm president of OCSR. I'm kind of in an unusual position.
We have your name?
My name, place. I live on 106 Keenan Drive, Garibaldi, Oregon. Okay. Thank you. I'm kind of in an unusual position here tonight. The reason is, is that OCSR has supported the trail since day number one, since Stea conceived of it, since the Port of Tillamook Bay conceived of it. Okay. We have worked to promote the rails with trails concept. And then all of a sudden here, we were blindsided about a month ago or six weeks ago and that the, they want to take away the rails from north of here all the way to Banes. Our economic impact to the communities in North Tillamook County and Tillamook County in general, but mostly in North Tillamook County is about $7 million a year. We started 23 years ago. First year, we did 2,300 people, passengers. This year, we will do over 60,000. And that's in 23 years. So I guess what I'm saying is that there is a very good market out there for what we do. We need to have expansion room. I would like to take this moment here just to make a little bit of correction that there was in the headline hero. Somebody said that there was only two trips left to be made to. Wheeler. Thank you. To be made to Wheeler this year from here. That's not true. You've got to add 33 more. So I guess the position that we would like to take at OCSR, we would like to see the rhetoric toned down. We don't want to see anybody getting pissed at their neighbor over this whole issue. We would like to see some people really get their thought processes put together and let's find an amicable way to really put this thing together. Okay. Luke has shown us that this thing is going to cost, you know, $5 million a mile or whatever it is. We tried to find the origin of those numbers. What we found is that there isn't really any origin of those numbers. It was kind of a buckshot number. So Luke, if you know where the origin of those numbers are, please get it to us. What we would like to see is a collaborative effort put together by the city of Rockaway Beach here. To get in touch with your people, our people, there has got to be a way to put this whole thing together so that both of these concepts win. Okay. Our ultimate goal is to get up to the Salmonberry. How much have I got left?
Less than a minute.
A minute. Okay. Is to get up to the Salmonberry. We have two bridges to get across. We are working with the Port of Tillamook Bay to get across those bridges to get back up there again. So what I would like to see, the, the Rockaway Beach Commission entertain would be a letter going to Michelle Bradley, POTB and dot org.
Please wrap up, please wrap up your comments now. Please wrap up your comments now.
Just looking for an amicable solution to this problem, not an either or.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
No, you had Kevin's been for you. No, no, thank you. Please. The chair recognizes John Orloff. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Thank you. My name is John Orloff. I live here in Rockaway Beach, 340 North Slope Way. I just have very brief comments. First, I'd like to say I'm very pleased to see that the speed limit in the middle of town was lowered from 30 to 20 miles an hour. The kinetic energy of a car goes as a square of the speed. And so by going from 30 to 20 miles an hour, you reduce the energy of a vehicle by more than a factor of two, which means that the stopping distance will be reduced by a similar amount. That's going to make things a lot safer. That said, I'd like to suggest that a couple of signs be put up, perhaps 100 yards or 50 yards short of each of the 20 mile an hour speed limit signs, advising people that the speed limit has been changed. I've noticed driving around that people don't seem to notice that, or at least some people don't. And I think it's just because of habit. They're used to driving at 30 miles an hour and they don't see the signs. One other thing, I'd like to reiterate a suggestion I made a while back, that parking be restricted for a distance of maybe a car length or so at northeast Third and northeast Second, on the south side of, of the city here, right, right outside our building here and on Second Avenue. Because when you're trying to pull out, going onto 101, make a left turn onto 101 from either Third or Second, cars parked here right at the corner make it very difficult to see what's going on. And I think it would be a little safer just painted a yellow line there for about 20 feet or so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Goldie C. Please approach the podium, state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. You know, turns yellow after three minutes, turns red after four minutes. We pull out the hook.
I'm officially done, but okay.
You are. You're very, you're very sensitive to the time limit. Thank you, Goldie.
I, I heard that you guys are thinking of getting rid of the train or somebody is. And I thought I wanted to come and recommend that you maybe do some studies, more studies on it. It really impacts our community. The train, it impacts the businesses. Believe they're very much appreciative and dependent on the business in the summer and the train is part of that. So they can be here all year. And as a community, we're dependent on all of them to keep our spirits up in a way because you're part of a village. And just to remember that before you start making really big decisions about how our town goes and what happens in it, because we kind of like it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Danny Callaway. Please. Okay. The chair recognizes Danny, Daniel Howlett. Please state your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. I'll let you know when it turns yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Hi, I'm Daniel Howlett, Rockaway Beach. Before I start, I just want to say thank you for the, the music festival was amazing. I wanted to just say thank you to all the volunteers and the people who put it together. That was awesome. I really appreciate that. So I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the way our city government is handling major public decisions, particularly regarding the Salmonberry Trail. From what I understand, the engineering study on the section from the wayside north to Wheeler came back far more expensive than originally expected. Instead of bringing those findings to the city council where they should have been discussed openly with public input and a council vote, the city manager bypassed this process entirely. He went directly to the Port of Tillmack Bay Board with an ultimatum, remove the tracks north to Wheeler for the Salmonberry Trail, or the project is dead on arrival. And this raises And this raises several troubling questions. Why wasn't the study first reported to the council? And why weren't our elected representatives given the opportunity to weigh in and set next steps? Why was the public, the very people most affected, excluded from the conversation? And who gave the city manager the authority to speak on behalf of the council without consulting our leaders? After all, the city manager is accountable to the council, not the other way around. So where is the transparency? And where is the respect for due process? Even more concerning is the response from our mayor. In a video posted on August 10th, he praised this action, suggesting the report might have just gathered dust if it had been presented to the council. That's not leadership. That's excusing a complete disregard for transparency and accountability. The city of Rockaway Beach has invested heavily in public outreach around the Salmonberry Trail. The city even hired an outside consultant to gather input and evaluate potential paths for the trail, never once removing the railroad tracks presented as an option. It was always promoted as rail and trail. Even at the most recent council meeting in July, this major change was never mentioned. Removing the tracks could cost Tillamook County millions in lost revenue and devastate the town of Wheeler if the train is discontinued. This is a major decision, well above the pay grade of a city manager. When it matters most, the public is shut out of the decision-making process. The problem is, this isn't an isolated incident. This is the same city manager who put the Rockaway Beach Police Station up for sale without public input or a council vote. He was hired without a competitive interview process, without ever submitting a resume.
It's turned yellow, Daniel. You've got less than one minute now.
This pattern of secrecy, unilateral decision-making, and disregard for the community voices cannot continue. Rockaway Beach deserves a government that operates in the open, respects its citizens, and follows proper procedures. We need to change the culture at City Hall. That begins with qualified leaders who value community voices instead of silencing them. Lastly, I'll just say, under the previous mayor, you used to actually discuss the comments that people made, and now you just ignore people. It would be great if you guys would just take a moment and discuss what the public brings to the table, so people can feel heard and respected. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Deb Weisenthal. Please approach the podium. State your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red.
I'm Deb Weisenthal, and I live here in Rockaway. I'm here to tell you about a new nonprofit called Go Rockaway that is here in Rockaway Beach. We're dedicated to enriching our beautiful Rockaway Beach community. And as such, we have a few things coming up in September that I'd like to talk to you about. The first one is Tuesday, September 9th. We have our inaugural community coffee. It's going to be a new monthly gathering designated, designed for all Rockaway residents who don't know. We're going to have it right up here in the vestibule area from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM with complimentary coffee and treats. And it's a great opportunity for everyone to get together, meet your neighbor, share stories, and build a stronger community here in Rockaway. We're going to do this through the end of the year on the second Tuesday of each month through December, and we'll go from there and see how it goes. That's, everybody put that on their calendar, September 9th. There is more information out on the desk in the vestibule area that'll tell you more about other things going on. September 20th is the big one. I had somebody mention that it would be a really good idea in the shoulder season that we do what other communities do and have a community garage sale. And John never should have said it, because we did it and we're doing it. And I have to tell you that the people have come in droves. I have over 40 households signed up for garage sales on September 20th. I have 26 of the businesses participating so far, and I think I'll have another five or six, offering either a buy one, get one, a 20% discount, 50% discounts. So we hope to do this on an annual basis, and this is kind of the shoulder season. We're hoping we get that extra warm month of September, so we don't have rain. But that is 10 to 5, the 20th of September. And there is information out there for anybody that's not on social media, how they can sign up for any part of this program. And then just recently, talking with Todd Hesse, we're going to do the push-in ceremony for our ladder truck on September 27th at 11:00 AM. And I did a little bit of background information and found out that this tradition has been around since horse-drawn fire wagon firefighters. That's where this came from, that you actually had to push those things back into the barn when you were done fighting the fire. That's where the push-in ceremony comes from. And it's going to be a great way to honor and celebrate our department, for the community to get together. We're going to have hot dogs, of course, lemonade, chips, ice cream. And we're going to do a drawing for a free starter go-bag, so that will be there. And we'll have a coloring contest for the children. So there's more information out on the table, and if anybody has any questions before I go, feel free to ask me. Thanks.
Thank you. We have no old business, so we move on to new business. Consideration to declare the Developmental Disability Program Small Grant/Community Grant Complete. Having heard the grant report from the Developmental Disability Program, the council may now consider a motion to declare the grant complete. The public comment period is an essential part of local government. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. I have nobody signed up here in the room. Just anybody remotely who has hit the raised hand icon to speak. The Chair will now entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council declare the Development Disability Program Small Community Grant Complete.
I move to declare the 2025 Development Disability Program Small Community Grant Complete.
It is moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council declare the Development Disability Program Small Community Grant Complete. Is there any discussion?
No, I just think they gave an excellent presentation.
Wonderful.
Given they were first past the gate to use our new process, which was much more rigorous than the past, I was very impressed with their report. All right, since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-44 authorizing the mayor and city manager to award and execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Pacific Street Improvement Project. The city received several bids for this project, and this resolution authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody remotely? And I have nobody on the signup sheet, so the Chair will now entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-44 authorizing the mayor and city manager to award and execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Pacific Street Improvement Project.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-45.
Forty.
I second the motion.
2025-44.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. Hey, that's 40. I'll see that again. I move to approve Resolution 2025-44.
Second.
I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-44 authorizing the mayor and city manager to award and execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Pacific Street Improvement Project. Is there any discussion from the council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-45 establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claims described in ORS 105.668 as amended by Senate Bill 179, open print 2025, closed print. The Oregon Legislature enacted Senate Bill 179 during its 2025 regular session, amending ORS 105.668 and making permanent the temporary changes made to recreation immunity law by Senate Bill 1578 in 2024. This resolution allows the city to opt in to the immunity provided for in ORS 105.668. Recreational immunity is critical for a community like ours with a visitor-driven economy, and cities with population under 500,000 must opt in. The current, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching remotely? All right. Well, the Chair recognizes Nancy Lannion. Please approach the podium. State your full name and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Nancy Lannion, Rockaway Beach resident. I simply want to thank the Oregon Trails Coalition and their, one of their main members, the Salmonberry Trail Foundation, for helping to make this legislation happen. They organized a lobby and letter-writing effort on Monday, March 10th. Myself, Counselor McGinnis, various people, including Kathy Walker, who's one of the two moms from Bay City who started the Salmonberry Trail possibility. So there were a whole lot of people there, and we were able to speak with many legislators. For instance, Senator Suzanne Weber and Representative Cyrus Jovity. And if they hadn't done that, it wouldn't have then gotten through, because it was dropped as a piece of active legislation. And the Oregon Trails Coalition, we did another lobby and letter-writing campaign, and that's what made this actually pass. Obviously, it's so very important to the city of Rockaway Beach, for the North Coast community, to all of the state of Oregon. And I really thought that they needed to be recognized for, in general, just their support of Rockaway Beach and our citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-45 establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claims described in ORS 105.668 as amended by Senate Bill 179, open print 2025, closed print.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-45.
Second.
I second it.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-45 establishing immunity from certain personal injury or property damage claims described in ORS 105.668 as amended by Senate Bill 179, open print 2025, closed print. Is there any discussion from council?
I want to thank Planning Commissioner Lannion for her comments just now, because the bill was dying, and it took a huge effort around the state, and she and I represented Rockaway to go in and lobby for it. So I want to mention that. And if people don't know what this is, remember when we closed our beaches for a brief period of time because there was no recreational immunity? So what this does is make a permanent law that allows us to operate recreational opportunities throughout the state without fear of being sued all the time.
Any other comment from counselors? Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-46 supporting a Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant application for Development Code Amendments. This resolution endorses the planning department's submission of a grant application for funding to further update our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance to meet Statement Land Use Planning Goal 10, housing. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. We have nobody wishing to comment, so the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-46 supporting a Department of Land Conservation and Development Planning Assistance Grant application for Development Code Amendments.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-46.
I'll second it.
Is it 46 or 47?
46.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead here.
I did that once. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-46 supporting a Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant application for Development Code Amendments. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025-47 supporting Tillamook County's Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant application for the second phase of Senate Bill 406 implementation. This resolution endorses the county's submittal of an application for the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant to build on work the city has already begun in collaboration with the Tillamook County, Tillamook Senate Bill 406. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have any? No one wishes to comment, so the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025-47 supporting Tillamook County's Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant application for the second phase of Senate Bill 406 implementation.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-47.
Second. Yeah, second.
I second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025-47 supporting Tillamook County's Department of Land Conservation and Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant application for the second phase of Senate Bill 406 implementation. Is there any discussion from council?
Just to mention, this one and the previous resolution we just passed are related to state housing laws that were passed that we will be, that we have to be in compliance with. And it's kind of nice, since we have to do this, to have the city staff looking for grant money to pay for it.
Any other comments from council? Since there are no further, there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Councillor Conroff?
Yes.
Council Martine?
Yes.
Council McGinnis?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We do not have any items removed from the consent agenda, so let's move on to council comments. The chair recognizes Council President Cheek.
I just want to say one thing. I support our city manager 100%. I think he's doing a fabulous job, and I disagree with Mr. Howley.
Thank you. Councillor Conroff?
I want to take a minute and just thank Danny and Mitch. I was able to learn a lot more about our water treatment, and it really gave me some good insight. And talking with them, I've just realized how lucky we are. I know we've talked a lot about our Public Works Department and how amazing our city employees are, but hearing them, and not only just hearing them talk about it, but hearing the passion behind them talking about it, they really, truly, deeply care. I think more than I thought two employees could care about our water treatment here and how fortunately, how fortunate we are to have them here in our, in our community and, and working for our wonder, wonderful city. Upstairs, we talked a little bit about CERT, and I'm really interested to learn some more about that and maybe get some tours and see what's going on with that, and just hopefully be able to draw up some more community effort to help us out there. And I think that what's happened in the last few weeks has really kind of shook the city a little bit, and I know it shook me a little bit personally in that I feel like I personally need to be more and better prepared. So I had a couple of suggestions for Chief Hesse, but I'm looking forward to working with them, and it's just been really exciting for the last couple of months to see how busy our town is. And I have a daughter that works at a business here in town, and when she comes home and she's like, "I'm exhausted." I'm like, "Why?" And she's like, "We were so busy, Mom." And I was like, "I mean, I'm sorry you did 23,000 steps tonight, but yes, it makes me very happy." And I've been really happy to see the movie nights. I've been able to bop down there a few times, and I just want to encourage the public to support those. That's one of the things, you know, that I heard that the community wanted, was they wanted more community-based things, and, and our wonderful nonprofits are making that happen. So, yeah. All I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Martine?
Well, during our workshop this, this afternoon, I learned a lot from Chief Hesse, and all he's done to organize our emergency preparedness and how he's got a group of volunteers working with him, and it's very comforting knowing that our little town's a lot safer.
Good, thank you. Councillor McGinnis?
Well, Robin Swain mentioned earlier today about the NCAM music festival, and I'm on the board of the nonprofit NCAM that put it on. And I, first of all, want to thank all the volunteers in the community that helped because we five board members cannot do that by ourselves. And we probably had about 20 volunteers from the community organized through the Rockaway Beach Volunteers. So you can contact Sandy Johnson or Robin Swain. If you have other things in town that you like to just, you don't want to be like on a board and plan things, but you just want to show up and, and help with an event, they organized that, and it was tremendously successful. We're still collecting data. I have been to several businesses to see how they, how it had affected their businesses, and every one of them told me that was, it was one of the busiest days they've had all year, so we, we need more events like that. The movie nights, actually, Thursday night is the time to come to Rockaway. A lot of people wait for Friday, come on Thursday because there's a farmer's market in the, in the wayside from 2:00 to 6:00. Then you have time to go to one of the local restaurants or go home and, excuse me, and eat dinner, and then the movie starts at dark, which is changing every week. And we have a couple more left. We also need volunteers for that because I'm on the setup crew and the takedown crew, and we have this huge blow-up screen that is about twice as big as that big mirror back, thing back there. And we're getting pretty good at it, but if you want to come out like, say, 10 o'clock or so when the movie's over and help us take it down, we'd love that. I also want to thank all the people who made comments about the Salmonberry Trail. Change is difficult sometimes, and there's a lot of confusion and misinformation out on social media about the trail, and I could pick that up tonight. And so I will give anyone my councillor business card. I would love to talk to you. You can email me. I'll meet you for coffee or tea or something somewhere and, and kind of help explain things. I do want to say this isn't going to be a little dirt path. This is going to be something that where children can ride their bikes, ADA accessible for everyone, it'd be paved. It's a different kind of path of what a lot of people are visioning. So I guess I could end that part by just saying, if, oh, no, I have, well, first of all, if you, if you want to know more of the details, like some of the financial struggles of the, of the coast train and why some of their plans are not feasible, read the Headlight Herald, Tillamook, Port of Tillamook Bay Commissioner Bill Bartline gave a real good summary of that. And I would be, I would be glad to take anyone on an observational walk along the planned path and, and show you what we're talking about. In alignment with that, we are still, by the way, this doesn't, these plans do not affect the running of the train from Garibaldi to Rockaway. And that is more feasible because of the terrain and the, and the lack of barriers, same barriers to put a trail beside it there. And the Salmonberry Trail Foundation is hosting a walk along the southern part and into the boardwalk on Saturday, September the 6th at 9:00 a.m., and October the 4th on a Saturday at 9:00 a.m. They've asked me to lead it, and I look out and I see several people here who've gone on previous walks. So you can either go on the Salmonberry Trail Foundation website and sign up there, or you can just show up at Anchor Street Park behind here at 9:00 and join a group of people to learn about the trail and the boardwalk. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
One more thing. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thing. Thank you, Mayor Charles, for your excellent State of the City address tonight. It, it makes my head spin, all the work we've been doing. And thanks to city manager Luke Shepherd for spearheading it all.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Ryan?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to echo what Kylie said regarding our tour of the, the water treatment plant and the, the passion and excitement and energy that Mitch and Dan had as they toured us around, and the effort that went into designing and operating that plant. The fact that I go home and turn the faucet on and have some of the safest drinking water, not only in the county, but probably in the state, just speaks volume for the effort that goes into providing that infrastructure for the folks of our community and our visitors. Also echoing Mary's comment about the mayor's State of the City report, one of my notes I wrote here is, "This is the city that works." And you just ticked off one after another item that just emphasizes that, and each of the reports that we heard this evening does the same thing. So lastly, I am really excited about Chief Hesse's project of getting information out to every household in the community in and around emergency management. I'm a visual learner, and to have that in front of me is really helpful. I guess another visual piece is to see those police cars on those side streets and, and around town because that's certainly a visual help to, reminding folks that we're a small community and we travel at a little different pace and enjoy yourself while you're here. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're meeting in the third week of, third week of August, as the council graciously moved our meeting so I could attend the Oregon Mayors Association Summer Conference in Baker City, Oregon. The conference was a time of new learnings and opportunities to network with other mayors. It's amazing what I, what you can learn by just sitting down and talking to what other mayors are doing and what they're experiencing. So it was a, it was a time well spent. On Thursday morning, before the conference kicked off, Sue Abigail, and those of you who don't know who Abigail is, that's our border collie, and I walked around downtown. Baker City has leaned into their history with the downtown filled with preserved historic buildings. It's, it truly is a special place. I said, I turned to my wife and I said, "What do the residents complain about here? It was so perfect." Anyways, there was a welcome mayor's sign in front of one store, so I went in and introduced myself. I quickly learned that the owners had just returned from a vacation to Rockaway Beach and will return in the future. My next stop was the city hall, and I chatted with two employees and heard that Rockaway Beach is a go-to destination for Baker City residents. Later that day, I approached a hotel employee to get directions, and he exclaimed, "I was hoping to meet the mayor of Rockaway Beach. My parents are there now on vacation." So let me just say, it was a special day to be mayor of our city. Many, many cities don't have the financial resources to send their mayors to the Oregon Mayors Association Summer Conference. The OMA offers scholarships, and two years ago, I attended on a scholarship. To fund these scholarships, the Oregon Mayors Association holds a silent auction at the summer conference with mayors bringing curated gift baskets. Thirty-seven mayors brought gift baskets for the silent auction, including me. Deb Weisinfu of Go Rockaway organized the curation, the curation of Rockaway Beach's entry into the silent auction. Nancy Albro, Don Backman, James Stephen and Kat Dubois, Steve Press, Barb Riley, Sue Hennessy Schaffbauer, Kim Tackett, Jen and Victor Troxel, Jan Nguyen, and Sue Wilson donated items for our Rockaway Beach gift basket. My thanks to all of them for being part of this process. The silent auction raised nearly $9,000 for scholarships. My hat's off to, and heartfelt appreciation to those I listed above. They all helped a small city mayor attend the OMA Summer Conference next year. Thank you. The OMA takes nominations and selects a small city mayor, a medium-city-sized city mayor, and a large city mayor for a leadership award. I learned that nine mayors were nominated across the state of Oregon and that I was nominated by a substantial number of our community members. I simply want to thank all who submitted a letter of nomination, knowing that my work as mayor is appreciated means the world to me. Thank you. We held our monthly coffee with the manager and mayor on Thursday, July 24th. We included a summary of the comments shared in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. The next coffee with the manager and mayor is Thursday, August 28th, in the second-floor conference room of City Hall at 9:00 a.m. We hope you'll attend, as is an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts in Rockaway Beach with city manager Shepherd and me. If you have ideas to share, questions, concerns about what is going on in the city of Rockaway Beach, or what you are hearing or seeing on social media, please email me at cmcneely@corb.us. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you. Thanks for your time and attention this evening, and I truly am still listening. May we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it. It's moved and seconded. Let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Councillor Conroff?
Yes.
Council Martine?
Yes.
Council McGinnis?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:15 on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. We are adjourned at 8:15 on Wednesday, August 20, 2025.